It's called the City and Marine City Commission Meeting. Marine City Fire Hall, regular meeting Thursday, February 6, 2020, 7:00 PM. Could we have a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan is absent this evening. Commissioner Flosson.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Here.
Second manager left.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Wendy Callahan, she's sick. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. I'm asking to add item 10B, an agreement for topographical survey for 260 South Parker, to the agenda. Going to get a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of 10B.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. This is your time to raise issues. The commission will not respond, but issues will be followed upon as necessary. Hearing none. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the regular commission meeting minutes, January 16, 2020?
So moved.
Support.
Any corrections or deletions to the city commission meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Approved. Next, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve. All in favor? Oh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Flosson.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes. All right, moving on to financial business. Disbursements including payroll, $487,046.64.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the total expenditures for $194,825 -- no, I'm
Support.
Question. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Flosson.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're moving on to old business, or unfinished business, with sidewalk replacement discussion.
So, last year, when we were working on the sidewalk improvement program, we decided that when we were done with going through all of the quadrants, we wanted to discuss how the program went, what we want to do moving forward, so that's kind of where we are right now. When we did the sidewalk program, we worked based on the information that we got from our insurance carrier to take care of the sidewalks that had a gap of two inches or more, because those were the liability issues for the city. So, we've since taken care of those, at least that we found and were aware of at the time when we were working on the program. So now, we're looking to figure out what our next steps are. I have had communication with Steve Saff, our insurance agent, regarding it, and he thinks that at this point in time, we can work on just an ongoing maintenance problem, or, I'm sorry, maintenance program. That being said, what we could do from this point on is, it would lie with DPW, so it would either be driven by any type of complaints or issues that we have had with the sidewalk. For instance, if we have a trip and fall, or someone reports something, we would go out, inspect it, and see if it is something that is a liability issue, and we would address it at that time. And then, as a component of that, we would also do an annual inspection of all the sidewalks within the city and look for any of those that are two-inch gaps. And that's what we're proposing to do moving forward.
We've talked about this before, and the liability for sidewalk issues runs with knowledge. And what we need to do is to make sure that there's an intake place for knowledge and notice that is centralized and not scattered. Somebody gets injured on a sidewalk, the first thing they want to do is show that somebody knew, somebody knew. And it's important that we have a system where the knowledge is funneled to one source, and that routine inspections, because once you're on notice of an issue, you have so much time to address the issue, otherwise you lose your governmental immunity with respect to liability claims. And we've talked about this before, so, you know, when we're in meetings and we talk about, "Well, hey, did anyone see that sidewalk over there? It's got issues." That's not, it really isn't that helpful, because now we're displaying knowledge, where all the knowledge should be really funneled through one source. So, if you, you know, you represent all the people, so if you get an issue, you should direct it, I think it should be directed to the DPW, so that they're the source of knowledge, which starts the clock ticking for purposes of acting.
So, what basically do we have to say? Like, if we're taking a walk, we all walk, right? And we come up to a sidewalk that is really, you know, just let them know the exact location and just say...
And then let him, and then let him...
But we should actually direct it to the city manager.
City manager.
Commissioners should, but any resident that comes across something can freely call DPW.
Right.
And he'll be the one that will be keeping a log, taking photos, working with our insurance agent, sending out letters as needed.
So, you don't want to be in a situation where, you know, somebody pulls minutes or tapes and says, "Well, you had an open discussion about that sidewalk." You know, you want to keep the knowledge funneled and centralized, so that your immunity stays in place.
So, everybody, so we just direct everything to Elaine, who directs it to Mike?
Right.
Right.
But we need to, but you want to do a inspection every year.
We'll be conducting a walk-through the city and going after those that are two inches or greater, which are our legal liabilities.
Right.
So, anything that's, we have a lot that are almost nonexistent, just pieces, so you're not going to touch any of those?
If they start having issues where there's, like, it's sunk so much that it's a liability, we will.
If it's a fall hazard.
Well, a lot of them are, because you're hitting the grass and you're tripping on the stuff.
Yeah.
But all I'm saying is, and there was a lot of two-inch lifts that got missed, I know about 10 of them that I've seen, but I guess the issue is that we went through and did the two-inch, and then we said we were going to go back through and try to go through another round. And yet, I know some people were willing to fix their sidewalks, but said they never got notified of anything, and then, because we only went after two-inch lifts. So, I guess, we also need a better thing, because I know we had an issue where there was a mix-up with the contractor, he tore out three sidewalks that really, the people were going to do themselves. We've got to have a little bit better process. I think we were late in getting the notices out, most of these didn't go out this last time till midsummer, which, and then it's harder to get a contractor. I know some that got notified and they weren't ever fixed, I mean, so I don't know how those are dealt with. So, I guess I'm just kind of wondering how we're going to do this in the future, and what kind of, are we going to keep better records of the stuff?
We're not going to be doing the mass mailings like we have done in the past.
So, the only time you're going to do them now is if somebody calls in complaints?
Or when we do the walk-through.
Or the result of the inspection.
Yeah, the annual, we will still have an annual inspection.
And we will react.
And it'll be citywide annual inspection.
Right.
And not just a region.
Well, how did the inspection last time get done? Was it a walk-through or just drive-by?
Mike?
Okay, because...
And if there were some that were missed, that's something that we'll be addressing as we either get complaints or walking through and find them.
And then, when you find one, and somebody tells you they're going to do it, and they never do it, then what happens?
Then we'll, if it's a legal liability, we'll be issuing a letter, letting them know that they have to get it done, or we'll do it.
Okay.
We're going to try, we're going to try and do them in-house with our DPW staff, because it's not going to be something where we're doing, you know, $50,000 worth of sidewalks in one year at one time.
So, let me ask you this, too. We have a lot of rentals, too. If you have a rental, is that going to be part of your rental inspection, a sidewalk?
Well, we're not doing rental inspections at this time, are we?
We are.
I thought we suspended that program, or delayed that program for checking for, because of the one concern, or did we receive?
I addressed that with them.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay, never mind, disregard that.
It would not be part of that, the internal part of the rental inspection, it would, I don't think that...
It would be a separate program.
It's a separate program from the rental inspection.
Are you still going to offer to somebody the one-third, now that we're into this new phase? You're still going to offer that?
That would be up to the board, if you want to fund that.
Well, I'm just asking, because Mike's shaking his head yes, so...
I think we should.
We always have in the past, regardless of whether we've had the program or not.
It's a good program.
It is a good program, and I think a lot of people took advantage of it, but we've got to make sure they know where to get the...
It's an incentive to have people take care of it themselves.
We've got to make sure they know where to go to get the form, or if, to me, I think if you send them any information, send them the form with it.
Yeah, we'll be working on developing forms in conjunction with the attorney and the insurance agent.
And we're going to have something that Mike's going to maintain on these records of calls or issues. So, there'll be a top part of a form, you know, "Receive cover," and then a line, and then what was the follow-up? And all of this, I know seems cumbersome, but when you're looking back after there's been an injury, it's all very helpful.
Someone asked me also to ask about, in the area, we have one area where we have some brick pavers. If those, they did that once downtown, okay, when we had a big streetscape down there. And then they ended up taking them all out because they were a problem. If somebody has...
They shift and everything.
They shift and they're slippery. If somebody has that issue that was put in by the city, is that something that they can get taken care of through this program?
I would think if they're well-maintained, they could probably stay in place, but if they need to be replaced, they'd be eligible for the same concrete replacement like anyone else.
So, they're going to have to take care of them regardless, even if it's a brick paver that was put in by the city?
Is there any left?
Yes, in the Broadway streetscape. That's where this issue's coming from.
Those were clays, weren't they? They weren't the original concrete ones that were installed. Those were all removed on Water Street.
Water Street got removed, yeah, but when they redid that one, they put some more in there. And so, that was a question that came up, because some of them are sinking, shifting, and I think some people feel that that shouldn't be their issue, since they didn't put them in, the city did, under a grant.
Love to take a look at that.
Okay. That's just one, I told them I'd bring it up.
When did you think you were going to be doing an inspection, a citywide inspection? What's your target?
Usually I start your work at the end of February, the end of March, and then we have everything from the contractor, get the contractors the list, and when he gets in, he gets in and starts. But if we have a short, we have a short this year, we're probably doing it ourselves, because of the cost of the concrete, and we'll probably contract it now, or we allow them, we'll put that out for them.
Okay. You just want to first get an idea of how many linear feet you have first, before you make a determination? Anyone have any other questions on the sidewalk program? All right. Moving on to appointment of election commission representative.
Anyone volunteer, want to volunteer?
I wasn't, or I am it now, so...
It's not, the reason we're putting it on here again is because our charter says that we can't have any standing committees, so I bring it up probably like once, maybe once election season, so I just need someone that would stand in for three elections, just have a quick meeting and be on the election commission.
Yeah, and I can't do the next one. So, it's going to have to be either you, you, or Wendy.
Well, Wendy's not here, let's appoint her.
Absolutely. I told her to take it one time.
It takes about five minutes.
It is, it's nothing.
Each election, honestly.
We meet, we just meet for like, we meet at this counter.
Yeah.
For five minutes.
We approve the dates and...
And we approve the date sign, and we...
And the people working.
Paul, you would be a very, very, very worthy candidate.
Would I? He's got to run. Worthy? Worthy?
Yes.
Worthy. When do you meet for five minutes?
He can't. He's got to run.
Oh, that's right, you're on the...
Be on the ballot. Oh, I can't, huh?
No.
Not this year.
You're on the ballot, you could, next year.
Oh, I could really screw things up, huh?
Yes.
What do you want?
You would be the Marine City Iowa.
Really, we had to go there.
Right. Good job.
So, if you're on the ballot, you're ineligible.
Correct. Well, you can.
Because I'll be on the ballot in the primary.
Again, so you've got three people.
Jacob, you would be really good at this.
When do you have to meet?
Five minutes.
15 minutes before this meeting.
We need a regular meeting for five minutes.
There you go.
You're already going to be here.
That's fine. And if they do a test, sometimes you come in for that.
Right.
I nominate Jacob Bryson.
I support that. And he's shaking his head, so he'll do it.
That's all you need.
All in favor?
Yay. See how easy that was?
There.
A little cohesion ever hurts.
Yeah.
Moving on to 10B, which is the topical survey.
So, to stay on schedule for the renovation of 260 South Parker, we have to have a topographical survey done. The reason that we have a quote from Project Control Engineering is because they already did the regular survey, so there should be a little bit of a cost savings for the topographical, since they, in essence, have kind of a portion of the work done already. The scope, I'm sorry, the price is $35.30, and to move forward with this tonight would be able to keep us on schedule, based upon the contract that we have with the engine partners in architecture.
Okay, so I took a look and found out the average cost of these is like $500 to $1,200. I mean, it's not like we've got hills and mountains and streams running through this property, it's pretty flat. And I understand that you have to do it for drainage issues, but it just seems kind of pricey.
And that was the cost for a topographical?
Yeah, it's the average cost, $500, $1,200. For the size of the property.
That's usually what I'm familiar with, with just a regular boundary survey.
It's a boundary survey.
Nope, they said topographical. For a small area like what we have, so... And is this just because of the parking mainly?
Mostly.
So, we're not doing the parking right this minute? We haven't even approved the plans yet, so I'm kind of concerned of how we're going to be up...
With them working on that guaranteed price, as I said, if we don't approve this, we can get quotes from a couple other companies, it's just going to push back the schedule.
Just for the parking?
For the contract.
Why does it stop the rest of the building?
Because they have to know things from the topographical survey to get their bottom-line price, which we're tentatively going to have on the agenda for February 20th. And they have to be able to get the information with the survey, so that they can get the packet to us with that number by next Thursday.
I'm still confused on how that affects...
Because the parking lot and the sidewalk are all part of the costs for our contract, so they have to make sure that they know, like, how much concrete they need for the sidewalk, how much fill they have to bring in to do the parking lot and everything.
Yeah, but it still shouldn't stop the rest of the project. The interior of the building shouldn't have any impact.
I'm not going to, I'm not saying it's going to stop it, it's just going to push back the timeline.
We can't push that any further back.
Yeah.
It's already been so slow, I think it's...
Yeah, we wasted seven months.
Where did this pri, where did we, where was this firm, was it one we used, or is...
Project Control Engineers we used for the survey of the property when we bought it.
The boundary.
And they were...
And I think that was, what, $1,500 or somewhere around there?
Which is normal.
$1,800 or something.
You're going to need a waiving competitive bid at this point, correct, first, to do it?
Yeah.
Right, and the rationale would be, we're using an overlap knowledge from a prior survey. We're using the same company as a prior, that already did the work.
Are we ready for this?
Obviously.
The survey? But we're not even down with the building and the location of all the stuff.
They have to do the topographic surveys, so that they can put together all of the costs for that number for the contract.
They're bringing back your not-to-exceed figure on the 20th. This drives some of that figure, so if we don't have the topo, then they're going to be less inclined to give you a not-to-exceed price on the 20th.
Okay, so let me ask you this. How can we get a not-to-exceed price if we don't even know what we're doing yet on the project? We haven't even approved the plans.
But you approved the contract with them.
We approved the contract.
You approved the form of the contract, and then there was going to be a meeting, I understood, right? Did, I don't know if that happened, and then you were going to come to...
Did the walk-through.
You did the walk-through.
Yeah.
Then there was going to be any changes, deletions, or alterations to...
No, we couldn't make them that night. We weren't allowed, we were just allowed to go in there and look.
Because you can't make a decision.
Right.
So, we didn't do anything with them that night, so that isn't done.
So, on the 20th...
I never really received any questions. I met with a couple of board members, and we talked about the plan, but never received any questions for clarity, or changes, or anything.
Well, I have a lot of questions, but I wanted to do it at a public meeting. I guess that was my contention, is that we do it here. So, I have a lot of issues and questions, I know...
Changes?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things that we could save costs on, so we need to have...
I think at this point, we don't really have any options then. I think we need to push the schedule back and get them in here.
We can do that on the 20th.
But you guys did all your homework, correct?
I mean, you've talked to every single employee that you have in the city offices, you've met with your planners, you've decided, you know, what was best for all the city workers, what type of, if they needed an office, or if they needed a partition, and the meeting area, and, so you've done all your homework, correct?
Right, the architects went through and interviewed everyone, they measured space, they asked about what people need to have readily available, what they can put in storage, how much space they need. They did all the measurements and things, yes.
Right.
I had met you already, and talked to you about the storage area of the 1,092 square feet of storage area, which I thought was way over. And we haven't really, I think, as a board, been able to sit down and look at it. You talked about it with your employees, but not, we haven't sat down and really talked about what you could do with it, and save money instead of ripping everything out.
And I believe we need to do that as a board, instead of individually. I think we need to hash this out as a board, instead of as a group.
Yeah, and I think at this point, putting it to February 20th, I think that's something going to back us up probably a couple weeks.
It's not a...
Right, so we'll plan on, now, would this still need to be done if we were doing that next, in two weeks?
I can get other quotes.
Get other quotes and do it on the 20th.
Is that including all the way, the, all the way back to Louis Miller Drive?
Yes.
The parking lot?
Yeah, it's the whole property.
Yes.
So, right now, so this is a mute?
We just table this?
Table this until...
So, on the 20th, you should come with your thoughts, ready to mark up and make final decisions, and then we can convert that to a final cost.
Okay.
Well...
So, we won't be then, on the 20th, then, coming down with a final cost for...
Well, I don't, I'm not, I don't know how, I don't know if they can stand there and do all that while you're changing things.
Right, absolutely.
Well, they won't be able to, because they won't have the topo.
And they won't have the topo anyways.
So, if we just do the topo in the next meeting and...
And all your final thoughts.
And the design.
Mark downs, and they come up with then, would they be able to then get us a final price?
Right.
For the first week of March?
And get your approval, and no action would be taken until you have that final price.
Okay, all right.
Depending upon the severity of the changes in design, it might take a little bit longer, but we'll make it right.
But the final price has to be reflective of your final thoughts. In other words, they have to know exactly what you want, so we can get to that final price.
Well, exactly, because, I mean, I even asked them, they were talking about replacing that whole sidewalk on the side, and there's nothing wrong with it, and after he looked at it, it was like, oh, so, it's like, stuff like that is what I want.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if there's nothing wrong with the sidewalk, let's not tear it out and redo it for no reason whatsoever, you know?
So, they have, they already have the measurements, the thoughts, and the concerns of all the workers?
No, all the workers.
Yes, but they need our concerns.
And that was built into the process, was to get your final approval of the project.
Right.
And then convert it to a final number. We can do that on the 20th.
Okay.
Because there's just a lot of issues.
And then, I will also get additional quotes for the topo.
Okay.
For the site, so that we can...
Is everyone in agreement with that?
Some of the numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Can we get a motion to table, or do we need a motion to table? Okay, good enough. All right, moving on then to city manager's report.
Held a department head meeting this week. I have been working with departments on their capital improvement plans, getting those updated in conjunction with the budget. The website, they have begun some of the importing of the content with the new design, and looking to go live around the end of March. I have been, sorry, brain freeze. I did a seminar, or I'm sorry, webinar today for Tourism Life Cycle. This was kind of an extension out of the First Impression Tourism. The GIS that the county is going to be doing for the enhanced county website is only going to be $1,100 for us to go to something that's pretty similar, I think, to like what Google Maps has, so I'll be putting that in the budget next year. Came down, I think, way below what they had anticipated, so very affordable for that.
That's cheap.
Yeah, they pick up a portion of the cost. That's all I have.
On your report, you talk about the building, and I guess I didn't ask this when we were discussing it. Are we also going to discuss the current damage to the building next meeting, and what we're going to do about it?
We can do that.
Yeah, and that'll be reflected in the cost discussion as well. In other words, did any of that stuff raise the cost? In other words, did any of that stuff raise the cost? That's one of the issues we need to grapple with.
Yeah, the existing plan, there's actually a couple doors removed that were not planned to be removed.
Well, and toilets and...
Who takes the toilets?
I don't know.
That's a great question.
There was a lot of things in there that certainly didn't...
Then leaving the building unsecured, and I was told it was for a day, but I know, and I don't know for sure, but I do believe it was for a longer period. And just the leaving of the building of that nature unsecured could lead to, you know, some very dangerous things being done inside.
Kids vandalizing and somebody getting hurt in there.
Another thing I had is, I had a call from a person. Apparently, the city sent out a letter for the group that plays cards. Can I get a copy of that? They sent a letter saying that we're no longer gonna sponsor them?
Yes.
I'd like a copy of that particular letter. And one thing I don't see on here is, I know we had given a direction about removing some properties from the master plan, is that in process or is nothing going on with that?
Parked properties?
Yes.
Yeah, we're working on that at the board, at Planning Commission.
We haven't seen anything at the Planning Commission as far as on any of the agendas, so...
It was on the agenda, yes it was.
And, and which one?
December or November.
Last year, end of last year.
We had it on the agenda, we talked about it.
Was a decision made and anything done?
We're still working on the revisions of the master plan.
Okay, so you're gonna revise the whole master plan and then...
No, no, there, there are a couple other things that they've been working on, implementing the information from the nautical mile.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's been at the Planning Commission.
Any other questions for the city manager?
Is Wade and Trim gonna do the planning now for the Planning Commission, the review of the plans, because our building inspector is not doing them?
He, he has been reviewing the plans. All the review letters that we have for the projects have been coming from Wade Trim. One of the things that we talked about is budgeting for them to be at the meetings because the building official that we have is not a planner and would not be able to answer the questions that Planning Commission has, so I've been working on getting numbers from Wade Trim to have someone attend the Planning Commission meetings.
But that'll be an additional cost on top of what we're paying a building inspector, where before, our building inspector used to do that.
Yes.
Any other questions for the city manager? Are you good with that, or?
Yeah.
Any other questions for? All right, you're now moving on to commissioner privilege and liaison reports. Cheryl, would you like to start?
We met, the economic development committee met a couple weeks ago, and we are always looking to, you know, promote Marine City, and we're looking at possibly a billboard on 94. We're looking at maybe putting some, some cool cutouts in the parks for the summer, you know, the cutouts that are all painted and people put their heads in them, you know? And the only thing that I, that we were talking about is like, literally, every single thing that we do needs to say Marine City, Michigan on it, so that people know where the, the photo was taken at. You know, we have so many opportunities to do stuff like that, to promote our city. In Nashville, Tennessee, they've got a set of angel wings on the side of a building, you know, and everybody stops and takes pictures of, of those angel wings. It's little stuff like that that really helps promote the city, and it doesn't cost anything, you know? So, we're actually looking at, you know, some sides of buildings to do some cool artwork and things like that, so we're just moving forward with, with our, with our plans for the summer, and when the weather breaks, we'll get some of this implemented. That's it.
Just to kinda go along with what you're saying about Marine City, I just wanna take a minute or two just to, just to acknowledge a couple people. Tomorrow, Laura Scatcha is gonna be presented, she's one of six women who are gonna be presented with the Blue Water Area Women of the Year Award up in Port Huron, and it's because of her connection with the River Ractine Zone that she's gonna be awarded that. And I think that's really a neat, well, not neat, it's a really special award that she's receiving, and I think it's a very, I think the River Ractine Zone's gonna be really an intricate part of Marine City. I think as Marine City, it has grown here in many, many years since I've, since I've been here, it seems to be continuously growing, and, and I think that that fire is still there, that it still has the ability to keep growing. I think the River Ractine Zone, just a little bit of momentum that it's already had, I know that, that the YMCA has come to talk to her a little bit, I know that the St. Clair Community Health Department has come to talk to her about how they can come down here and be a part of the teen zone, so I think the teen zone is a special thing, and it's gonna be, once again, bringing Marine City on the map as a place for teens to come and be mentored and be safe, so I think that's a really neat thing. A real kind of a side note, which I think is really kinda cool, is that Wendy, though she's not here tonight, Commissioner Wendy Callahan, one of her dreams, she's always been very connected with Disney, she's had a very huge passion with that, and she was able to become a, a trip advisor, a trip, which was one of her dreams, to become a person who can schedule Disney trips. So, I think that's kinda neat, she's fulfilled one of her dreams, she's able to do that now, where you could go and schedule your Disney trip with her, and she'd be able to help you along with that. I just think that that in itself is kinda neat, being connected with Disney, which is a huge corporation, and it just puts another little, another little feather in our cap for Marine City. So, I just think that Marine City is, just, I feel that it's still growing, that I don't think it'll ever lose its hometown feel. I think that's our, that's our edge, and I just hope that we, as not just the government, Marine City itself, Marine City government, but the people of Marine City just keep, keep going forward and making it better, so...
I agree.
And on a really, really side note, I, Little Bird told me that Dave Van De Bosch's mom did, are celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary, so I wanna just say, if I'm not able to see them...
And you're 51.
Yes. I wish that if I, I get to see them, I wish them happy anniversary.
It is a surprise party?
It is.
Yes. So...
So, there you are.
This doesn't air until, so that's good. You didn't read the whole thing, did you?
He just said that they were celebrating, I didn't say anything about a party.
Good deal, but it is a surprise party, so...
Well, boy, I tell ya.
It's fine.
Well, hey, you know, you know what, 50 years, 50 years is a long time, I think that's a huge, a huge accomplishment, especially because they had to raise you, they must've had to wanna pull the plug at one point there, but they stuck it out.
So, when does this hit the air? Hopefully.
Saturday.
Saturday.
Perfect.
We're good, we're good. They won't watch it anyway.
They do.
She does.
She does. So, we're just stepping all over.
Happy anniversary.
So, I'll have to keep her out of the house tomorrow.
There you go, there you go, move along.
Love the TV.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think that the teen zone has been a good thing, and I know that we tried a couple of times in the period of years to start a teen center in the town and didn't have a lot of support, and then when they came along and, and took over and led the way, I think she did a real good job standing up to get that through. On the other hand, with the Planting, Planning Commission and their agenda, I guess that they're gonna look at the marijuana issue again and see what's what for locations. I know that every, that the voting thing was that everybody wanted it, but every unit that I deal with, it's not so much they wanted, they wanted marijuana to be legal, is, but they don't want it in their town, or in their city, or their township. So, that's where it's, it's getting, getting to be, a lot of people opted out of it and ran into a guy that came into one of the townships, and he was in the wrong township, and he bought a house, and he was gonna grow marijuana, but his building is, his lateral inspector let the cat out of the bag, and I wouldn't issue him a permit, so... And we got a new building going up on Degersy that we approved last month, right? And so, we're moving on. And I hope that we can get together and, and get the city hall moving also, so that's it.
It's coming along. All set?
All set.
Okay, next. I noticed in the bills that we paid the final on the Safe Houses to School issue, have we ever heard anything back from them on the buttons that they removed from everything along M-29 and how that's supposed to function, but they left them everywhere else?
Last I reported is that at a future time, when they get a better technology, they're gonna look to potentially put it in.
Just done?
A whole bunch of ifs, 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 yeah.
So, you got nothing from them?
No.
Okay. Couple things, the Old Newsboys, we're having our drawing for an ATV side-by-side. If you want tickets, the tickets are 20 bucks, it's a real nice ATV, which you can ride in town. The drawing won't be till November 21st, but you can get your tickets from any Old Newsboys member, including me. Also, the Lions, we're having our Wild Game Dinner Monday, sold out, yay, lots of good vittles, so everybody that's coming isn't gonna miss the food, and hopefully, everybody next year that missed out, get your tickets early, 'cause that event goes well. And we appreciate everybody that supports both of these organizations. That's it.
Nothing?
Nothing. Well, I've gotten an announcement before my, and yes, I didn't come up with this, but she, Chris is having me do it, since she doesn't have a microphone, I think we should budget her a microphone next year, so...
It's okay.
Election announcements for March 10th, 2020 presidential primary, last day to register by any manner except in person with the city clerk is February 24th. May register in person with the city clerk with proof of residency March 25th through March 10th. Absentee ballots are available and may be requested in person with the city clerk by phone at 765-8830, or email by kbackster@marinesity-mi.org. Look at that, I got that even without screwing it up. City Hall will be open on Saturday, March 7th, from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. for issuance of absentee ballots. The primary election is a closed primary, which means that voters are required to choose several types of ballots, ballot types, Democratic, Republican, or ballot only containing proposal Commission seats, the city of, the city commission has the following seats expiring in November. Mayor, a two-year term. Three city commissioner seats, four-year terms. Anyone interested in running for a city commission may pick up a candidate filing packet at city hall. All candidates filing are due to the city clerk on or before April 21st at 4:00 p.m. Are we good? Next, we have, we had a successful 145th Annual Fireman's Ball last Saturday, went very well, had a great response, had a, it was wonderful, they had a lot of well-dressed, I mean, everybody dressed to the nines for the most part, it was pretty well-done. Lot of bow ties, though, it was a little scary with the number of bow ties. Chief Heslop was there in his bow tie also.
You looked good, you looked good.
And then Commissioner Merchant in his bow tie. But it was very well, and I wanna thank the community, they stood up for us again like always, and of course, it snowed like it does every year, I mean, snow or freezes of some type. So, well, that's when you have the first Saturday in February, I guess you're gonna, should expect that, it is Michigan. But thank you to everyone, and the Rivertown Event Center had a ton of staff in it, everything went very well, so thank you to them. And also, we have a career fair Wednesday, April 18th, at the high school. We're actually putting a table together for public safety. We're gonna have Marine City Area Fire Authority, Marine City PD will be there with Jim Jones to help our, our youth make a decision on a career. MSP will be there, Michigan Department of Corrections will be there with us, hopefully the Border Patrol, Customs and Enforcement also. We're gonna try and put something together, we're trying to get something into the high schools with that same program base behind it too, so hopefully, we can show that we can put a nice program together for them on a permanent basis, and we'll, we'll go from there. And I think that's about it I have for announcements, so... The city commission may enter into a closed session to consider material exempt from discussion by state and federal statute. There may or may not be action taken upon returning to open session. Could I get a motion to enter into closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkam.
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
There we go.